Yes, I'm sorry, that is, uh... I don't know. If you would stand and we'll ask Ms. Mordle to make a prayer of this meeting.
The most gracious heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day and thank you for the rain. And we know that we need it, or you wouldn't give it to us. And we want to thank you for the blessings you give us each day. And where your son Jesus died on the cross for our sins. Help us that this meeting go and be in your honor and may thank the S and I name. Amen.
If you would remain standing, we'll say a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America. Continue your work with which stands one nation under God. Thank you very much. We very appreciate you. It's just so cool. Can you ever turn it off for some reason? All right, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And Lucy, would you go ahead and call and roll, please?
Yes, sir. Myrtle?
Here.
Eugene?
Here.
Mayor Self?
Here.
Brenda?
Here.
John?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, have four.
All right, thank you very much. If you have a cell phone, if you would, please mute or turn them off for the duration of the meeting. We would greatly appreciate that. And I know that the emergency order has been rescinded, but I'm still asking people to wear masks during, in a meeting. And we'll continue with that for the time being. All right, uh... After we take care of the businesses, the towns business, we'll open it up for comments and questions. Okay, let's go ahead and review the minutes from the previous meeting, June 14th, 2021.
Yes, sir. Mayor Self, Mayor Arthur Self called to order the regular meeting of the town council at 7:00 PM on the June 14th, 2021 in the town hall. The invocation was given by Myrtle Van Cleet. The pledge of allegiance was recited by Hall. The road hall was held, the following persons were present. Mayor Arthur Self, councilors Myrtle Van Cleet, Eugene Kylie, Brenda Lowe, and John King. Steve Glue was asked. The minutes from the May breaker meeting were read. Brenda Lowe made the motion to accept. Seconded by Eugene Kylie. Motion carried. Financials for May were given. Steve, I mean, Steve didn't make that. Oh, I don't remember.
I think Eugene did.
I think Eugene did.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I failed to change the language. Eugene made the motion to accept him as given. John King seconded the motion carried. Mayor Self spoken. I know the thanks to whoever cut the grass around the winkle sign in County Line Road. For this, we were grateful. Oh, business. The clerk reported that the town limits, sign, town limits and street signs have been replaced on Dean's Ferry Road. Mayor Self passed out his budget for 2021. Mayor Self requested approval from the council to purchase a microwave for the sheriff's department to use while utilizing the town hall. Motion was made by Brenda Lowe to purchase a microwave with a cap on the cost of $150. John King seconded, and vote was unanimous. Jennifer Morris made a request for a waiver of mobile home age based on inspection. IAW ordinance 2021-001, section 3G, the section and section 3H. The clerk had offered up the photos of this home's interior and exterior. Also offered the inspections done by licensed plumbers and electricians. Brenda Lowe made the motion to approve this waiver for the age of the mobile home. John King seconded. Motion carried. Curtis Kathy petitioned the council to have the overgrowth cut back on the intersection of Dean's Ferry Road and Coppersville Road. This has had become a safety issue. He stopped and spoke to Mr. Kathy's petition by adding that he almost had an accident coming onto Dean's Ferry from Coppersville at night. This was in an emergency meeting. Mayor Self asked the clerk to contact Block County to correct the unsafe intersection. A motion to adjourn was made by Myrtle Van Cleet and seconded by John King. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. This is a safety caution.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the minutes from the June 14th, 2021 meeting? All right, do we have a motion to accept with correction?
I make a motion with the... The minutes are read with exceptions.
All right. All right, Brenda's made a motion, Eugene has seconded. All in favor? All right, motion carried. All right, the financial reports. Oh, stack on here. All right, let's go with the first one, which is the general fund. Our beginning balance was $28,579.07. Our ending balance is $27,491.05. Uh, next up is the capital improvements fund. The beginning and ending balance is $16,096.77. All right, next one up is moving Block County Ford. Our beginning balance was $26,139.43. Ending balance, $26,769.96. All right, the next up is the four, five, and six road account. Beginning balance is $12,764.57. Ending balance is $12,966.39. And next we have the two and seven road account. Our beginning balance was $9,954.21. Our ending balance was $9,055.86. Okay, the next one is a rebuild Alabama gas tax. Beginning balance is $12,855.63. Our ending balance is $13,751.72. And the last one is the rebuild Alabama diesel tax. Uh, beginning balance is $4,163.62. Our ending balance is $4,444.99. Any questions or comments on the financial reports as read? If not, do we have a motion to accept as read?
Make a motion, we accept as read.
I'll second it.
All right. All right, Eugene's made the motion, seconded by Myrtle, all in favor? All right, motion carried. All right, uh, we have no reports of standing committees, uh, special committees. Uh, have we got any update on road work?
No, sir. I hadn't heard nothing from the commissioner.
Okay. Uh, along that same line, did they cut the bushes back yet?
Oh, they cut some of them. I, I wasn't pleased with it, so I'm gonna, when I talk to her, he and I'm gonna tell her. I, we rode down there, was this morning, and, uh, they, when they put my signs up, I asked them to put up, they put the town limit sign, it belongs on Dean's Ferry at the Colory. They put it up here in the curb.
Yes, they did.
And then, you know, it, so they didn't, didn't get it.
Okay.
That still down there needs, needs the sign, you know? So that one needs to be taken up.
All right. And we'll follow up on that.
And I have told them, I did twice.
Okay.
I've sent emails.
All right, well, we'll keep, keep cracking it and...
I was gonna keep after them until they did. I, I left emails with the, um, electric message with the engineering office, and then I've sent emails to John.
Okay. Well, we'll just have to, uh...
I have no way of being intentional, Washford. He, he doesn't answer. We might can reach it and tell him his name for the sign.
Do you send an email or, or text?
Uh, I texted him, and I never got a response from him. And Jefferson County did come out and cut the grass, you know, and then a day and a half later, it's standing up again. Because the sweet lady bless her heart, she's, she's not turning her blade on, I don't think, when she's rolling, rolling over it. She's just knocking it down and...
All right, well, let's, uh...
So I'm gonna get back with Mr. Vaughn on that.
Okay.
I'll try to get you.
Um, also, under reports of officers, I do have a, I've already notified the council, but FEMA has made the initial selection of, uh, possible grants for fiscal year 2020. And, uh, County Line has been selected for further review. There was three possible categories. Not qualified, not selected, or selected for further review. And at this point in time, we are, we have been selected for further review. Also of note, we're the only project selected for the state of Alabama. There was one other approval for selected for further review, and that was management calls for state FEMA. Uh, but we were the only project.
We had a good chance.
We have, we're certainly still in the running. And we'll get my hopes up too much, but we've, we're in the running. We're still in the running, so they had something like, uh, there was only $500 million available for this grant cycle. But the, uh, applications that they received, they received over, uh, almost four and a half billion dollars worth of grant applications. So there was, you know, quite a number curtailed, uh, to get down to the final cut. The final selection, I think, uh, is supposed to be made, uh, or the grant will be released to those qualified or selected sometime in September. And we've got a couple more months to find out.
We'll know quick.
Hmm?
We'll know pretty quick.
Yeah. Yeah, hopefully. So anyway, I didn't wanna put that out there. Uh, I was, when I first saw the notice, I saw that we were selected for further review, but I had not noticed that we were the only one from Alabama. Until Mr. Lee contacted me, and we exchanged some emails, and he pointed it out to me. So, yeah, we're, we're still in the running, so... Okay, any other questions or comments on that community safe room? And for those of you that may not be familiar with it, drawings are back there on the bulletin board of the proposed building, so... Anyway, all right, um, going to old business, we did get a microwave purchased, and it's installed, so that's done.
And I did not spend $150.
Okay. Well, that, that, that would've been a real fancy one for $150, I think.
Oh, yeah, I, oh, I think, what was it, 75? It was, it wasn't...
I have mine, but mine...
It's on your, it's on your general fund check. Uh, checking, it's listed on there. It'll be Walmart. I think it might've been a total of maybe $2.
Yeah. Well, that'd be good. So they've got, you know, everything they need here. All right, uh, the other item I had under old business was the Coppersville, um... Overgrowth, but that still don't work, so... And, uh, I really didn't have any new business. Um, under petitions, applications, uh, complaints, et cetera, I have the, a lawsuit listed on that, but I'm gonna want to circle back to it and we get, uh, take care of the other business, uh, in case we need to go into an executive session and to discuss a lawsuit. Uh, we'll finish up the rest of the business first. Now, during last, uh... During our last meeting, we approved a, uh, a waiver for, uh, Ms. Morris for the age of her mobile home. Uh, but I got to thinking about it, I think we need to, uh, have a resolution to the effect that we gave her a waiver. Uh, so this is a resolution granting mobile home maximum age waiver. Uh, resolution 2021-002, whereas ordinance number 2021-001, County Line, Alabama, mobile home and mobile home park ordinance establishes the maximum age of a mobile home that may be placed within the town limits of the county line, Alabama. And whereas ordinance number 2021-001, sections 3 dot G provides that a waiver may be granted for home, mobile homes older than 10 years upon successful completion of inspection by qualified mobile home, uh, manufactured home, mobile home inspectors. Section 3 dot G also sets the inspection minimum standards. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the town council of the town of County Line, they have all written inspection reports along with photographs of inside and outside of subject mobile home, were presented to the town council during the June 14th, 2021 town council meeting. And a mobile home maximum age waiver was granted to Jennifer Morris at that time. I approved this 12th day of July, 2021. Okay? All right, we have a motion to, uh, accept or approve this resolution. All right, John made the motion.
I'll second it.
Eugene's second, all in favor? All right, motion's carried. Uh, Lucy, I'll give you a, a signed copy here after the meeting and, uh... Get that taken care of. That's it, I think, just to show that, uh, we did give her approval. All right, um... Did everybody get the copy of the nuisance report form that I sent?
The what?
Uh, Lucy and I developed a form for reporting nuisances, and I sent a copy to, uh...
Oh, yes, I did.
Okay. And, you know, I just wanted to find out to council what they thought of it, if we need to add anything additional, additionally to it, or is that a satisfactory form that we can, uh, publish?
I think it was fine, because you had a place for comments on there, so...
All right. Uh, any other comments or questions on it? Okay. All right. I don't know that we need council approval to use it, but I just wanted to get the council's input on that form, so, uh, we can make an attachment to, of that form to the nuisance ordinance, uh, just so we have a copy of it. And I will publish that on the website so that people may, uh, download it, cut it out, send it in. Okay? All right, uh, that's all I had under, uh, on my agenda with the exception of the lawsuit. Do you think that we need to go to executive session for this?
I do, Mayor, uh, and I, I take it by the microphones and the video that, uh...
They'll be cut off?
Yes, and I, I think it'd be more appropriate to discuss that, just as most of the council members in executive session.
Okay. All right, uh, we need a motion to go into executive session, and I would say we need at least 30 minutes. We'll, we'll set 30 minutes as a timeframe, so do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion we go into executive session.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. Steve made the motion, and, uh, Myrtle has seconded it, all in favor? All right, motion carried. We will adjourn to a special, uh, executive session, and, uh, it is 7:25, we'll, we'll say 7:25, so at five minutes to eight, or before, we will return to and close out the meeting. So, all right, uh, we'll be cutting down everything here. Turn the volume back up here. Okay, uh, the executive session is over with. Uh, do, does the council have any other questions or comments? Uh, we are back into regular session now. The council have anything additional?
I don't.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hogue left me with this complaint, nuisance complaint board for the property on Smithville Road, and his complaint is a derelict structure, environmental, uh, junk, accumulated debris, abandoned vehicle, and other. And, uh, he signed it.
Okay. All right, that, uh, well, that does bring something up that we do need to address real quick. Um, and nuisance abatement board.
And where is the property that it...
Right down here. It's Smithville Road. I don't know exactly the exact house number on it, but he, he just put Smithville Road. Um, it's, he says it's the first property on the right past the church.
That's where the trailer and the...
Yes.
Structures are, um...
Bubba Brooks is in there.
I don't know of an address, but I guess I can look it up.
That's his property?
Bubba Brooks.
Is he owner or does he live there?
Um, I'm pretty sure he owns it because that was his mom's trailer.
Does he live there?
Do I?
When he ain't in jail.
Um, I think he stays in that building, that barn thing.
So you think he lives there? When I saw a woman down there with that trailer...
Yeah, I think somebody's living in the trailer, and he lives, when he's not in jails, he lives out there in that barn thing.
Okay. All right, well, uh, nuisance abatement board, you know, the, the ordinance establishes nuisance abatement boards who will take action on the complaints that we receive them within 30 days, I think it is, the timeframe. But right now, we do not have anyone appointed to the nuisance abatement board, so we need some nominations, names, to, uh, occupy the nuisance abatement board.
And Mr. Kathy, we appointed him.
I thought him and Scott was, we talked about him and Scott, I believe. At one time, I think we said something about...
Cause I was, you accepted, didn't you, the night?
I totally might be glad to help any way I could.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, Lucy, um, in your minutes, Curtis' last name is Calfie, C-A-L-F-E.
I think, let me fix that. I apologize. I hate messing with my husband's name.
Well, it sounds like Kathy, but it's Calfie.
Yeah, but it's C-A-L-L, okay. I apologize.
We, uh, really need to have at least three, and preferably four people on the board. Minimum of three.
At least, though.
I say, yeah, minimum of three, maximum of five, cause it needs to be an odd number.
Yeah.
I don't know the guy's name and, uh, party if I'm speaking out of current.
Uh, really, we're looking for nominations right now.
The, the guy who sat right back here tonight, fireman.
Oh, he...
I don't know what his name is.
He stopped him.
He's...
He stopped him.
I think he would be a good servant, a really big good man.
He lives in Gray Napier's town.
He works for firemen.
Yeah, he lives in the town, and we do need to have residents on this board. Yeah, he lives in the town, and we do need to have residents in, on this board.
I think he would be a good one, too.
All right.
So nominations are...
That's, uh, Scott and Curtis, and Heath right now. Uh, anybody else, you know, that you can think of that might be willing to serve on the board? Uh, please let me know, and we need to contact them. All right, uh, I'd like to talk to Scott and Heath.
Okay.
And Curtis, we appreciate your willingness to help us out with this.
I wonder about, um... What's Malcolm's brother?
Caesar.
Caesar, what about Caesar?
I don't know. Malcolm said he's not doing real good health wise. You might ask him, but, um, I'm not sure if he'd be willing.
Yeah.
I know he's had to fully retire.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But it wouldn't hurt to ask.
But, uh...
He might be in arrest because him and Dan had some words at that meeting down there.
Heard it?
Uh, Caesar, Albert, and Dan had words when, down at that meeting, hadn't they?
Oh, that was about the, the nuisance they had going on that started his property.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, we'll, uh, finish with that, and, uh, we'll, I'll contact Heath and Scott to see if they'd be willing to, uh, serve on board, so... All right, any other business or question?
I'm sorry, I, I, y'all finish your business and then I'll talk.
Yeah, the council have anything else? Okay.
I've got two things. Number one, the, I love the, the LED light that's at the end of my driveway. I said that really good, but there's something wrong with it. I own the thing about half the time, it doesn't walk, but they have, they stay on red clock.
Okay.
Okay, and what's the number of that light?
You got a brand new number that we have to go by.
Okay, and this is a...
Oh, they changed all of them.
Yes, they, they told me that when we went around and looked at them, that, uh, there's, where your light's sitting here, right above your light, there's a number on this upper end, and that's the number you gotta have to report the...
Okay.
Call me that number?
So I can redo my map, huh?
Well, my intention's wants to go around and get the numbers off of all of them, and, uh, just haven't done it.
And the number is square?
If your light's sticking out here, it'll be on the pole right above that block.
So you gotta climb the pole or get on the ladder?
You can see it from the ground.
Okay.
Okay.
The second thing is, um, we talked about the county fixing the road right down there in front of the Bobo's house. There are now places where the tar and gravel's coming up. In several spots along the road there, uh, my wife and I have been walking since I had my surgery, and we're walking down to the farther Bobo's house, and it's gotten to the point now where I have to slow down to two miles an hour to go across the, that drainpipe there because it's dipped so bad.
Yeah.
And, of course, I, you still have this picture of the... Yeah, that's definitely, yeah, I, I, I'd probably need to give, uh, Commissioner Washburn a call and get him back out there.
Yeah, and, and we do want to pursue or continue to pursue Smith, uh, Smithville.
Smithville, yes.
And getting something down there.
You have to sit on it.
The word was that he was, was soon as he could get to it, that's what he was gonna do.
Okay.
But, uh, he hasn't given me no, no time on it or nothing.
Yeah, we need to put a bug in his ear again and, uh...
I'll send an email.
I'd, I'd love to see, you know, both those, Smithville and Converse Hill issues resolved. Uh, and we got some money in the road accounts, most of them, that, uh, we've, you know, we've got enough money now that we can actually do a little bit of something with the raids.
I think what I just want to take, fix cobbers, is to put in new, uh, grain across the road there because that one doesn't seem to be sufficient, and to open up the ditches coming down both sides because it's running, filling the ditches and running across the road, not going through the drainpipe.
Right.
I mean, even before it gets to Bobo's house, it's crossing, crossing the road and coming down. And even back this side of there in, in the, in the S curve, uh, before you get to there, where the, where the, who lives in, to the left, back behind the Bobos?
Uh, the, you know who they are, those people that used to come to the meetings all the time, that had the buffaloes.
Yeah.
They, Francis sold them.
It, it, it's washed out real bad right there, too. It's, it's, the water stands in the road right there all the time.
It's right there at that, when you're coming in to, uh, Converse Hill. It's that last trailer, there's a driveway right across.
A lot of the gravel's washed down into the road, too, and, and so there's potholes and, and gravel, and, and there's water that stands in the road right there all the time.
Yeah, well, water will, like, destroy a road, just like it does roofs. All right.
So I'm done.
All right. Okay, anything else from, uh, council?
I make a motion with adjourn.
All right, we got a motion to adjourn, and...
I'll second it.
Uh, John's already seconded it, all in favor. All right, motion carried, just meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for coming and putting up with us tonight.
I just realized I didn't put this thing back on, I'm sorry.